It is six thirty on October the twenty first of two thousand and twenty one. So I will go ahead and call this uh planning meeting, or planning commission meeting to order. Ms. Amanda, if you will, uh call roll so we can establish a forum, please.
Commissioner Harbor?
Here.
Commissioner Shoffler?
Here.
Commissioner Moore?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Bellenmeyer, Commissioner Shipley, and Commissioner Fort Barry are absent.
We do have four members present, and that is a forum. Uh moving on the agenda, uh the first thing that we have is the approval of minutes from the last regular commission meeting that we had on September the sixteenth.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Harbor.
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Moore. Uh is there any other discussion on the matter? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next on the agenda is the code enforcement monthly report. Uh Director Wallace, for yours.
Yes, sir. Nine permits for the month of September, three uh certificates of occupancy, thirty-one total building inspections, uh maintenance complaints with sixty-seven, forty-nine closed, total of a hundred and sixteen permits, one thousand one hundred and nineteen.
Rex, is the same one we look at Tuesday night, I know we had nine in September.
Mine's got nine and nobody else has anything on that.
Yeah, mine's blank, so I don't know if those were uh new builds or additions or old ones.
Yeah, okay, we got residential additions is three.
Okay.
New build is one, fence three, pool permits is one, and store shed one.
Thank you, sir. Comment down the bottom, it says about grinder systems or something, talk about that just a second.
Yeah, that's just uh what we're putting in um Oak Creek face for.
Okay.
What about the maintenance complaints, what's the biggest maintenance complaint that you have?
Grass cutting?
No, well, it's really not grass cutting now, it's people who's got a lot of trees growing on their property leaning on fences, things of that nature, junk. You know, grass is pretty well getting down, but we still got people calling in, not just people trying to have a yard sale that looks like, but it's not, it's just junk piled outside the carport, so.
So a uh an inoperable junk vehicle still has property maintenance.
Right.
Right, okay.
Yeah, anything in the city streets the police handle, anything in the drive is ours, but it must crank, operable, no tags, they don't have to have tags, but it must move on its own, or it's deemed a junk vehicle.
Um a resident asked me this week, and I wouldn't be certain, um RV parking, is it perfectly legal to park an RV in your driveway here in September?
Depending on whose covenants you're in, and um part of uh Home Insurance Association.
So that might be an HOA, HOA may deem. But as far as a token's concerned, there's no regulations.
You just cannot have them hooked up to utility, nobody can live in it.
Gotcha.
Man has called a couple once before that part one side house hooked it up, hook satellite and everything else up, and she runs off.
Sewer and. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions for Director Wallace? I've seen none, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Uh next one we have, we have no old business, but we do have a under new business, which is consideration of the sign permit applications. The first one we talked about is uh is um I think it's a fabric, and it's uh yeah, it's sewed square. And I think it's, where's that location at?
Uh it's one seventy-six Wesley Reed Suite B, it would be where Robert Chumich Church used to be.
Right there.
Tipton Repair.
Yeah, right by Tipton Repair, it's in the same strip. It'd just be A, B, C, and D. D is Tipton Repair, then you got the T shop to be heard, and then A to be open.
And this one is not light up, no electric?
No.
Wind is silent?
Uh no, it's above the front door.
Like a building sign. Yeah, okay, gotcha. As far as I know, this is the first one of these we've seen that's gotten in on, is this, is this something we supposed to been seeing these, or?
Um well, go ahead, man.
Um so because there was some confusion on when we have design review come before you guys, and when not, and and um just to make sure that it's clear and you guys are actually seeing these things just in case, just to have that account accountability and just that that second chance to make sure nothing slips through, that's that's kind of what's going on now, so all permit applications.
Just a business suspender's problem.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, cause you know, when we had Michelle here, we would report them to Michelle that her review, she'd send us back.
And I think when we get, yeah, plan our back.
We're gonna tell, tell plan our back to Phil, I would be okay with this.
I think so, like, so like, cause I don't see it having to come to us every time.
Yeah.
Now, if we're having other items on the agenda, I'm okay with it, but you know, so, just to be.
So the zoning that we adopted does say that it comes here.
Every sign does?
Yes.
Okay, see, I thought some were staff level approval, but if that's not how it is, then so be it.
Yeah, all all applications for sign permits of any kind and for approval of a master or common sign plan shall be submitted to code enforcement on the application. Uh and then for the completeness, but under the action section, it says within thirty days of the submission of a complete application for a sign permit, planning commission shall either approve or deny.
Okay, fair enough. Now, when she, when she want to open up?
Yeah, November, both, well, her and November first.
Okay.
Sewed square.
Okay.
All right, so are we looking for a motion to approve um so moved? They have a motion to approve by Commissioner Moore, go second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Smith, is there any other discussion on the matter? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carries. Next up is Lutz's place. I hope I'm pronouncing that right.
That is right.
It is, okay, all right. And what's the location of this one?
Uh one oh one Wesley Reed Suite A, which will be to the left of the Tucker Fitness in the same strip as the Tucker Fitness.
Okay, there. And this one will be, it looks like there's electrical on this one.
They are, we talked to Mr. Jerry, they don't know if they are or not, but they know they have to go through Mr. Jerry to get a file and submit to us before they can light it, he's still undetermined where he wants to or not. He's not gonna be open during that time frame to have to have a lit sign.
Okay.
That's the reason we put another, for now, in case if he comes to us and wants to light it, then he's gonna bring me the permit application for electrical from Jerry Archer before he can turn it on.
Does that want to happen, and Jerry will take care of all that?
Right.
You know, uh signs like that, um if Mr. Archer were flying raceways, you know what I mean, the 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 back box, especially like a large junction box for um so that the wire connections are not in the, basically in the sign or the brick?
Uh the way it is now, everything has to be in a junction box, has to be one hundred percent sealed. ULV, uh ULV, right, all that has to be on the signer, he will might let you plug to it. Everything is in a sealed disconnect box, you know, used to, you'd have to take the wires real, take the sign down. No more, it has to plug, and you just unplug, and that stays on the wall. He got away from the naked wires just hanging.
I knew that was code in some municipality, but I didn't know he, Mr. Archer's job, so. Fair.
He's gonna be right.
So do we have a motion to approve of that?
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Moore, do we have a second? I'm sorry, by Commissioner Harbor. And a second by Commissioner Moore, all right, is there any other discussion on the matter? All right, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, motion carries. Next item up on the agenda, it's just miscellaneous items from the planning commission uh to go over, I know um I spoke briefly with uh Director Wallace, I did have a few citizens call and complain about Tracy Road and uh oh, I can't think of the name of the little street the guy lives on, uh Hickory Lane, you know, and and uh and you know, about having a business in a residential area, essentially working on cars, fixing them up, and then driving up and down Tracy Road. So you wanna kind of advise on?
Yeah, uh what we're, me and Mr. Shoffler was talking, it's it's a nuisance for our people that live in the city, but the yellow line of Tracy Road splits planning region and city. We as, me, does not know if that is a business or not, whether it's a bunch of buddies hanging out, the shop's always been behind the house. Just when he moved in, they started hanging out, working on cars, loud, whatever. We do not know if it's a chop shop, we don't know if they're getting paid to work on cars, or just buddies hanging out. So like me and Mr. Stephen, we may have to send out the tax assessor, if it is a business, then they will assess every tool and every equipment in there, then that business will have a set time to be open. You know, if it is a legit business, eight to five, not from five at night to twelve at midnight, so.
Where's this at? It's on Tracy Road and Hickory Lane um.
If you come up fifty-one dollars, you know, on the Tracy, head east, cross the bridge, first street to your right. First house on the corner. But it's in the planning region, it's not in the city limits.
And this will be different.
The people that are fussing live in the city a hundred foot apart.
Right, and this will be different if he was building the shed or building.
That is correct. If he was building a buil- building to have a business, then. No, but the building has been there.
Which one?
Right on the corner, uh lose the mouse, sorry, there it is.
Yes, yeah, the shop's been there for a while. But what he's doing, he has an access point here, and they're just hanging out and doing, he actually lives in this house, but they're coming out, running up and down the road, and then coming back. So the people that's in the city on this side is not happy. But everybody from the yellow line back south is planning.
I don't think that number thirty-three is, that's in the county, that's in the county as well.
Uh huh? That, everything. I know, but every, I know what y'all saying, but for Hickory Hollow, that house across right here, this is in the city limits, has city sewer.
It's not.
I know. I know, but that's, it's got to be fixed, but this is city, city sewer, city utilities, this is not. If you come on down Tracy, you got two sort of businesses, Wallace Estates, Wallace Estates, I mean, the loft is in.
That's the loft right there. That's the loft right there.
Yeah, the loft is in the city limits, okay? This is city limits, rest of all this down through here is planning region. You do that, and you go to Rosman and um Foulter, it's in the city, nothing else is in the city. All the people that back up to Cherokee, Choptoe.
It's all county.
Uh. All of that is all planning region.
And but when you're coming off of fifty-one on Tracy, at the bridge is where the actual, from fifty-one to the bridge, you know how you can bear onto the left?
Yeah, I know what you're saying.
So right there on that bridge is where it actually marks the inside of city limits on the road.
There's Hickory Cove.
That property is not.
It's this little. It's far right here. All this in the yellow is.
Hang on a second.
Overland.
Hang on, I'm trying.
Which is that?
He's in a overland.
Do you see?
You should have uh some city limits.
There we go.
But yeah, those people, this square pays city taxes, city sewer.
Allo, stain, wrecks.
But all this right here is planning region, that's it.
Yeah.
The all, where this location is, it has business, it's in the planning region. We have no control of it.
So from code enforcement standpoint, right.
For point, only thing I can do if it goes a structure, it's self permitted to do structure. Other than that.
So what I'll, what I'll do then is I'll get with uh, I'll get with Mr. Beatty uh with the county, at the county level, and then where we need to go from at that point in time.
Yeah, I mean, if it is a business, like you said, let the assessors, they'll go out and assess, if it is a business, then they will get taxes off of loving us all the way up to the biggest reason they have.
Oh yeah, they're they're quiet.
They're 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 quite, if it's a shop, they're, they will pay so much for a shop rag.
But I appreciate, I appreciate all the help, and the clarification, so. Is there any other miscellaneous items from the planning?
Anybody, uh I think we asked a representative here, sir, to come tonight, they.
We did, you're on attendance.
I went by this morning, and I, he wasn't there, just left a message to see if he could come, hadn't heard from him all day.
We'll see, maybe we can get him next month then.
I'll do, I'll do a certified this round, quit going, just send a certified, we need him to the next joint meeting at this date, and get him to do it in a registered letter.
Have you sent him a certified letter saying that he's got a accessory structure that's not permitted?
Uh that goes back to if he screens anything, he can have it.
Even, you know, look at it too, I don't know that that thing's entirely on his property.
Yeah, he owns that, if you look at their property, he owns seventy-two feet over. Cause if you remember, he shoved to the road as far as he could, the road that we put in, he owns quite a bit in the grassy area. But I told him it had to be screened, he understood, like me and Mr. Shoffler was talking about earlier, he has a scrap pile. The scrap pile is not for his use, there's a gentleman that doesn't have a job, whatever scrap that they pick up, that is that gentleman's scrap, he lets him have to pay his bills. He wants to put a fence up because the scrap pile is getting thin sometimes at night when people come through and take what they want. He did tell me he was gonna put a fence, he didn't say he was not gonna put one. Determination when, can he lie and tell you that?
And so that's from your first conversation with him like a while ago.
That's right.
And I, when I talked to him, he said, you know, he told me he's gonna put one up, and it's on the wind, but I didn't know, is he gonna, is he gonna do it, or is he gonna get some?
One of the fence companies, Cardinal Fence Company is one of the. I assume he's putting it up.
Yeah, okay.
And I told him that we have a new process for fence, so.
Yeah, you don't have a newer aerial view that shows his building by chance? Sure, I'm gonna try Google, you know.
And then I know some uh, some of the areas, of course, are are backlog, and I love the prices and.
Well, they dropped, you know, they're not as bad as they were.
But it's the labor short, you know, I know.
That's, that's a true statement.
I had some issue. I had some stuff built mine, and boy, I'm telling you, it took, it took a minute, so.
It did, but once again, if he's, if he had a contract with the fence company, that'd be, that'd.
This policy is, Dr. Law, I guess. I think DC Remming.
Well, I, I think that's fine, let's just send a certified letter and see if we can do that, and then be okay, well. I don't know with the postal service.
I don't know, here, no, here with mine and Remington stuff that she goes, we've been getting it back pretty good.
Okay.
Uh on the certified, staying here mail, stuff like that, now, when it's a big bulk, and they send, they gotta send it to Buckmail in Memphis. I used to, why, but that's how they work, you seen every bit of the mail we have here that gets picked up, goes to Buckmail on uh down by Ever Presley, goes through the bulk mail, gets re-sorted, sends back in the same truck to carry it down, and probably in the same bag. Why, I don't know that, but that's just uh procedures.
Any other, uh well, is there, everyone else is pretty, you're all okay with that, with the certified letter?
Oh yeah, yeah. Uh once again, I'd like to thank man for, you know, he brings a lot of local jobs, and he has a great business, but at the same time.
I will, I'll say that, but Lee, you know, Lee, he does a lot of things for the community that uh that go unsung, and that are that are not heard of as well, and he doesn't want it to be, um but yeah, I think getting him here and trying to see what timeline we're looking at, getting that done would be nice too.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate that, any other miscellaneous items?
Um a couple of things, um I wanna kind of, I guess, bring it back up, the uh old fall decoration hut that Mr. Loudon Beck's got, um did we determine that's kind of like the same thing as the T, where it's a temporary structure and doesn't have to be approved, and any of that, or kind of?
I'm gonna elaborate, if you give me a second on what he told me.
Okay.
He has a business license, that whole bit, area is his, he used to sell pumpkins around the front.
He did, I bought pumpkins and straw for him.
And now he just moved it around to that side to sell pumpkins. I asked him, was he gonna get a permit, and he said he didn't need to because he has a business license for that area to sell what he wants. Summertime gets here, he wants to move it back, cause he's gotta be back sixty feet, and he wants to open up smoking ordeal. That's gonna have to be brought before y'all, just like the drinks on Rosemore. But right now, it's.
But he adds two buildings to the property, did he not have to get a permit for those, a shed permit or accessory structure?
Nope.
Why?
Should, he, he just didn't, because he told me, I'm just going by what he told me, and I look back and trying to find business, just like bringing in a shed, if you own a business and you bring one in to set up to hold your stuff. He's already paying property taxes on this area, he's already on a business license for the whole lot.
Well, he leases it from Gladys Walker, I'm not paying property taxes on it, but uh, and and I'm not sure if he's leasing that other lot or not, if he's just leasing a big lot.
I asked Miss Glad, it was hard to do, but I did.
Because it, like I said, somebody told me, I was like, well, it's Halloween, you know, the whole deal, I'm like, well, now he's talking about bringing in Christmas trees, and you know.
We have a temporary, a temporary fee, is it, what is it, hundred, hundred fifty, for thirty days?
Right, just same way with fireworks tents.
I mean, cause I know Bill went, looked at and made sure that, you know, there was, you know, safe access, egress, you know.
And fireworks tents have more teeth, says something, by this day, gotta be gone by this day.
Right.
You know.
But I would think these, like I said, brought new buildings in or structures, that that would at least need a a shed or accessory structure permit for that piece, cause it's it's a change in his, I mean, it probably, there's no proof site plan for that, but it's it's a change in in what they have out there from a site standpoint. Agree, I mean, once again, I'm, I'm, I'm pending on staff.
Yes, it's. You got a principal building, and he's doing business out of it, he's placing additional accessory structures, which are subordinate to the principal structure, so yes, create an impervious area, you need a permit.
And I've spoken to him, uh as far as getting like bringing in a plan, because he was saying he wanted to be able to do seasonal, and I told him he was gonna have to bring it in here and get an approval from you guys.
Right, cause make what you think, like parking, you know, and.
I told him too, I said, you can have a permit for both, and no, I don't.
Let's step through this. Okay, um so with that being said, uh one of the residents uh over by the ball field called me this week, uh across from Gateway, particularly asking about um like mounds of dirt with grass growing on them, and of course, the how long do we have any, do we have any teeth for how long, that a porta potty is considered temporary, you know, of course, that porta potty stays out there all the time, and and then with the trailers on the other side that are, you know, just kind of, not the, not the cargo boxes, but now apparently some some actual enclosed trailer, trailers have been just kind of parked on the lot, and um.
Wheels on it?
Wheels on it.
It's a trailer, I mean, unless the subdivision has a rule where you can't park the trailers. Uh you can leave them for six months or something, but.
They've been there for six months or more.
But. We, you know, we went through with Shelley for him to bring in stuff, and then the two buildings got left, we one dugout member had it do totally moved because it couldn't meet the setback requirement, and they pulled permits on the others. So it can be cleaned up, grass cut, stuff knocked down, now, you go to Q Alert, we send something, it seems like every month, and it don't seem to be working either.
Right, so that's where my question is, that we, at what point, you know, what, what, what teeth do we have in terms of, you know, from a legal standpoint? If, if he's in violation.
Right.
So but a mound of dirt with grass growing on top of it, that, that's ground, you know, and then a trailer parked in, on your property. Right. That's a trailer parked on your property, I mean, I guess.
That's what I would, that's.
So once again, you know, you'd hope a business, once again, those things would be screened, but, you know, he did take over an existing ball field that the church owned.
Right.
So, but there's lots of discussions, of course, the neighbors, you know, they.
It is for sale, and maybe somebody.
I was gonna ask, is that whole lot for sale, or is it just that one section?
It's the whole, it's two lots where the ball, the field's at now.
Right.
To the east of it, it's another section, he.
Three acres or something?
He's trying to get rid of it.
Well, he's trying to make a hefty little profit, which I'm not gonna blame him, and probably.
Somehow I got a phone call the other day that, somebody called here, they're gonna put mini storages out there, I don't want that around my house, well, nobody brought anything here.
Yeah.
So stop the rumor, there's no mini storages coming.
Cause that's neighbor commercial, so.
Right.
Any other miscellaneous items?
Uh is there anybody here from Sioux Cove? I don't see anybody, but it's kind of the same thing, I had a couple of residents uh reach out to me, they're gonna come to the board, Mayor Alderman. Um there's a gentleman at the end of Sioux Cove, if you drive down Mead Lake, you can probably see the massive shop that he has, which Rex has told us is permitted. Um he's uh according to the neighbors, doing some powder coating and some welding, and um they consider it a full act of business and a nuisance, and I said, well, I'm just one person, it'd be great if he came and talked to, talked to the board, but of course, they didn't, so.
It's a mess, if you can see it all, he like wrote, it's a mess.
Oh. So we're Sioux Cove, backs up to Mead Lake, and he sits down kind of in a, in a, in a hole, and Mead Lake's up kind of high, and so you can you can, I mean, his backyard, I mean, like you said, it's a mess, but it's actually his backyard, unfortunately. It'd be.
Which one, which one?
Six or seven?
It's gonna be.
This one.
No.
No, 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 go back.
All right, hang on, hang on.
Go room.
It's gonna be his next code.
Yeah, that's not.
It's not saved?
No.
That's saved right there, saved.
Well, they, it's over here.
There it is.
That one?
It's this house here. Baby's house.
Nope, next one.
Um this is it, ain't it?
Nope, next one.
What are these codes?
It already had a structure in the backyard.
Right here.
That covered it.
This.
It's a second or third house from.
Now you do it, cause the driveway comes up, and his new shop is right here.
So that is.
Right here.
Forty-seven Gil Cove?
Yeah, right there. And the roads are about five foot higher than this, so you can see everything laying on the ground.
That sounds similar though to the other situation we talked about all from um Tracy, though, if he's doing that, just, he like powder coating his own stuff, or what?
I don't know what, I know he's powder coating, if he's powder coating somebody, I couldn't tell you that. He doesn't advertise that it's a powder coating, you can't find anything that's powder coating, if you go to his name, there's no signage around saying powder coating, now, he's got a lot of stuff, he's got side by sides, boats and everything else back there. Backyard, but it ain't only written in the backyard, he's got welding equipment and some other things in the driveway on the side of the house. But it will be checked in two in the morning, and we'll go a little bit further, and if it's a business, or if not, I'll do like you, I'll get the tax assessors out to figure out what it is.
I hate that.
And in that way, if it is, then we can get money on rags, nuts, bowls.
All right, appreciate that, any other miscellaneous items? Hearing none, move up to citizen concerns?
You know it.
I got one.
Two Brian twenty-three seventy-five Mead Lake Road, first of all, I want to thank Mr. Rex, cause if you guys admit.
Ten grand, twenty-three seventy-five Mead Lake Road, first of all, I want to thank Mr. Rex, cause if you guys have been down Mead, Mead Lake Road, uh, right between twenty-four seventeen and twenty-three seventy-five, and seen that property on the right, with all that concrete up on the ridge there, there's a lot of it down in the ditch, and we, I can't think who that was that was contacted. Rex, who was the company that you contacted?
Uh, we called TD.
And they came out, and I think they're gonna actually do something about that. So.
Is that that empty lot, there's that one empty lot that's sitting there, and then all of a sudden, all the stuff just showed up?
Right.
A trailer used to sit on that lot back.
It's a trailer that had to move.
To the people across the street out there, or?
No, that's me across the street.
Okay.
I saw, I thought there was a, I thought there was a trailer that was over there.
It's not a trailer, it's like a garage.
Yeah, the trailer was, uh, because it had flood damage.
Yeah, there was somehow a little.
He's got, it's a, it's a ten or twelve shed with a lean tube off of it. But the trailer that used to be there, it had to be moved or it's gonna wind up in the creek. When the flood hit that year, it was four foot water in it, and then the bank eroded, you couldn't even walk behind the trailer, cause it was the creek. So it had to be taken out.
Our concern was it was gonna go into the creek, and you know how the floods are already in there, and plus, the concrete, it was demolition concrete. And that's what would come down the creek, creek, it's stopping up or even knock down a, a nicely bridge, which, I'm okay with. Quite down our road, but I don't want that to happen, so. So anyway, I appreciate the work being done with that, thank you. Um, I do have a question, I'm looking at the minutes from the last meeting, and I know, I don't know the city, do you know where, but the, uh, big ridge, um, behind our house, I spoke with him, uh, I'm gonna thank him for taking my call, that he's not here, um, the, the one that's on the minutes that shows the property behind my, my house and my parents' house, um, I wanna say, is gonna be changed on the minutes, if you guys can correct that one here, cause according to me, this isn't correct. The flood line, the flood zone line is way up front, so I wanna say, they're gonna go back with the original plot, uh, that, uh, that showed no houses right immediately behind my parents, cause that's a flooded area.
That is, that is correct, I wanted to, sorry, go ahead. Now, I was gonna say, they, I think they requested a change after approval, and we denied that. You know, in the.
Did you deny the change?
But it's gonna up his angle about it.
Yes, in other words, it's gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna reflect the theme of flood maps.
Okay.
Yes.
And, and I understand that the homes behind the, at my, behind your parents' house, just because that is, part of that is the flood zone, and it's right there in the area that holds water, do you know if they took those houses out of that area, they're like, what, what are the houses in the houses? One, two, three, four, five, six, ninety-six, last night.
I think that was where you would include, they included those into where the elevation had to be raised up.
Yes, ma'am. Um, another thing, I was wondering, Mead Lake, not Mead Lake, Tracy Road, this afternoon, I was late to work, and, um, they're dumping some gravel on the side of the road, up the hill, are they doing something to the road again, I was just curious.
Where, where?
There's like, oh gosh, you know the house that was there that had the big pond in it?
Second house from, uh, Mead Lake.
Yeah, it's right up on that hill, they were, they were just dumping some gravel.
Were they filled the pond in?
Something's wrong with the road.
This, this, you've been following?
Yeah.
Okay, you talked about this area.
Yeah, they had that link.
You talked about this way, Ms. Brown, east?
Yeah, right about, I don't know which house it was, it's one of those, make this house here. They were dumping a lot of gravel right here, I know something was wrong with the road or what.
I thought they just got their driveway reformed with concrete, is that the same one?
No.
No, I think the, I think the driveway you're talking about, I, I had the address up there, but when they paved the road, they didn't roll the edge out, so it transitioned into their gravel drive, so they were just dumping some gravel in there, just to smooth it out. It was like a three inch drop.
Sure, this new road's not going bad or anything.
I didn't know, no, it was just more of a courtesy to the resident, uh, because of the, when the roof was.
I think I see, I just wanna say, I would thank Rex, I appreciate it, and, um, for my concern in, um, the map, I just wanna make sure that map was the right one.
Alright, thank you.
I don't wanna see the one up.
And then, um, uh, seeing that, I mean, that's everything that we do have on the agenda, I would ask, uh, you know, staff, is there anything that the planning commission, is there anything that we can do to better assist you guys? I told you I'd be asking.
Start bringing some pizzas, son.
I told you I'd start asking you every now and then, if there, what, what can we do to better help y'all? Um, you know, I know we meet once a month, but, uh.
No, if you have.
I think they just like having form.
My favorite thing is, if you have a question.
Yeah.
Call me and put it on my radar.
Well, I'll tell y'all, I, I appreciate how accessible y'all have a whole, a whole life been, at least to me, um, or if I call or text or something, even sometimes we're just sharing a joke or something like that. But, um, but y'all, y'all have always been accessible and doing that, I really, I really appreciate that from all of y'all. Of course, if I ever need anybody, I can just go to my neighbor, and just jank his chain, I guess.
No favoritism around here.
No.
And you go to your neighbor, ask your neighbor after five.
Neighbor, my neighbor, yeah, my neighbor's yelling at me all the time.
I guess Steve just to add on that, and I know, it, it's obviously not, nothing on the agenda this week or this month, but in the past, I, I know there's some stuff that y'all probably wanted more time to, to feel better about, to, to get everything done, probably spend a lot of extra hours up here, and from my standpoint, if there's everything, or you just, you don't feel that you have enough time to actively review it before taking it to us, if, if they turn it in too late, then you won't hear any flack from me for lies of this on the agenda. If, if, if y'all need more time to review something, then I'll fully support that. I know that, that's been an issue here in the past, so, yeah, let y'all know.
Appreciate it.
Especially that we're short staffed without a planner right now.
Alright, but nothing further more, the chairman entertaining a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Have a motion, do we have any objection, hearing done?